I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual, liberty, and justice for all.
Just a reminder, we record our meetings, we ask anyone that has a cellphone to please silence it. Including myself here. Anyone in the, if anyone wants to talk during public comment, you can come up, please come up to the podium, this state, what town you reside in, and I can give you five minutes to sort of... That being said, I'd like to call the meeting to order at 7:01 PM. Can I get a motion?
Can I make a motion to start the meeting?
I don't believe you need a motion.
Yeah, they could be. Thank you, I wasn't looking for that, but thank you. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes from the regular meeting? Which would have been, the last meeting, which would have been Monday, April 8th.
I wasn't here, so I...
I'll make the motion to approve the meeting minutes.
Thank you, thank you Lance, all in favor?
Hi.
Thank you. Correspondence, Christine.
The board members have received a draft copy of the April 8th meeting minutes of the public hearing and reorganization and the regular Board of Trustees meeting. Village Clerk received the affidavit of publication for the advertisement of bids for the Firehouse pole barn, the timetable record, on March 26th. We received Bank of New York Mellon statements, collateral statements, for the month of March and the weeks of March 25th and April 1st. The fire call history reports for February and March have been completed and received from the Deputy Clerk Fire Secretary. The Water Systems Operation Report for March 2024 has been received from Frank Valentino Jr. On April 9th, we received one programming change from Charter Communications. We've received notification from Orange County Real Property Services that printing of the tax bills will be going up to 25 cents per bill with a minimum of $250. I don't remember what it was before, maybe. It's only, it's only a slight increase. And updated bid for the Firehouse pole barn, including prevailing wage raise, has been received from Slate Hill Storage. And we received a notice of violation from the Department of Health regarding a letter to Frank that was not answered within 30 days. That's all I have.
Thank you Christine. Jumping on over to John's TPW report.
Okay, um, we'll be picking up the tree for this weekend on Wednesday. We, we will be putting in the new control valve in the water plant tomorrow night, um, at midnight. So the water system will be down. I notified the Fire Department that the hydrogen's gonna be out of service. We also notified the state. The other tank will be filled and hopefully, we can get it done within like a six hour period, but the new one in can get back up and running.
That should not affect anyone.
No, it's just the side of our tank and all that. Like, that's why we picked at midnight, because less, we'll be using the...
I already knew the answer, I just wanted the public to hear it, thank you.
New tables are at the park. We need four more tables to finish up that table project. The new swing set is still on schedule, it'll be here on 614. I called, um, a few of the junkyards about getting up in the dumpsters for metal. Brim's gonna bring a few up at zero charge. That way, we don't have to run trucks down into the junkyard. We'll fill the dumpsters up, he'll come pick them up and pay us whatever metals and, that we get from trash. Water report for month of March, the village used 46,438 gallons per day. And then on the prison was an average of 106,539 gallons today. We're up a little bit because we also flushed hydrogen last month. We're meeting with Delaware Engineering tomorrow to go over all the reports and stuff, so they can start their thing for our bid operation.
What time are you meeting with them?
Huh?
What time are you meeting with them?
I'm not actually shorting, you can call us in the morning.
Um, April 26th is the date that I put online for all pickup to start throwing your stuff out. Little League Parade over, I already see some people have their stuff out, but the nice part about the Little League Parade was, is I didn't see any trash out through people's front yards from, from School Street down, so that was good. So, I only picked the date with the 26th, but start putting it out. You guys will start picking up.
On the 6th.
On the 6th, okay. So, I have all next week to put their stuff out. And, uh, we start picking up on the 6th and just make sure it's out by the 6th.
That's the week, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Once we go by your house, that's it. But we get, we say that week, so we never know where we're going to be. Shouldn't we have, must have garbage and recycling unfortunately, while...
Busy week.
Yeah.
Thanks John. How's Frank's truck making up?
Good, he got the trucks in. He likes it, runs nice. I just picked up all the new details on, uh, Friday. He's going to pull on sometime this week.
I love that it has the guard on the back window.
It's nice.
Like we talked about doing the...
I got a price on that one for the Kubota, thinking of that. And that's only 352 dollars. So we're gonna order that and just put it on there.
The window's 1,200, right?
Yeah. So, and we also got letters for that, whatnot and all that.
How's the other truck coming, do we know anything about the date?
They're waiting for the new body to come, um, the bed to come in, which should be in the middle of May, he said, and once he gets it in, yeah, we building the truck, so.
Alright, perfect, thank you. Uh, let's see, um, Town Mount Hope, Carrie, what you got?
We hired a part-time clerk and a part-time cleaner at our last meeting. Our clerk is starting today and the mayor, we will start next week. We approved Local Law Number 3, which was a Hidden Valley sewer law, which we're required to do at state. Unfortunately, summer records have been canceled, there's only eight people who've signed up, so that, they've all been refunded. We are looking into possibly doing some type of drop-in programs for a couple hours a day, throughout the summer. And at this point, with two years of very low enrollment, we're not planning on revisiting summer for next year or this year unless something changes. We will be having family lily night throughout the summer, but first law will be on Friday, May 31st. I don't have the schedule of movies yet, but we should have it out soon. And then Otisville Elementary PTO is gonna be having a fun run at the town park on Saturday, May 4th. So there might be some increased traffic around Vinch Hill, turn if it starts at 10. That's all I have.
Alright, thanks Carrie. Kurt, you got anything?
Spring's here, so the speed trailer will be out. Officer Lox is gone for training for that. If anybody has a request of where they might want it near their, on their road, they can contact me at the phone number for the department or my email. We've been getting calls about bears near houses. Just a reminder for residents, just don't leave bird seed, chicken feed, dog food outside. There is a very large bear that was spotted in the village, he was at least 400 pounds.
More than one, too.
Yeah, this one was pretty big.
We can't have chickens, so.
Alright, thanks Kurt.
Unless you guys have any questions?
Working on the signs for the weight limits.
Yep, ranch work on that.
When we get a little closer, we'll just let you guys know. Thank you, thank you. Fire Chiefs report.
You got anything for the Fire Department?
Alright, Trustee Reports. Bob, guess who's going first today?
Oh, what an honor. I was supposed to report, I wasn't here last week, but, uh, following up on the Historical Society's event on June 2nd, the Day at the Harding Farm. It'll be from 12 to 3:30 PM, free admission. There'll be music by The Blend, uh, John Wilbur's, John Wilbur's Band. And there'll be a lot of events going on, so this all benefits the Harding Farm. The Old School Community Center, I said, we're having an open house on the 24th of May. There'll be more coming out on that down the line. And we will be making an announcement, a couple of weeks ago I said that there'll be an announcement coming up. We still haven't been able to publicize it yet. And I'm chopping at the bits, but, uh, it'll be good news when we announce it. I think that's it, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you Bob. We're gonna talk to Christine later about that flyer.
Well, one quick question, last year we did a no-mow May. Are we doing that this year, or that, are we allowed to mow this May?
Well, let me say this, um, we want you to follow the law. So if you have a section in your yard that you would like to not mow, then you're welcome to do it, as long as it doesn't become, um, a complaint from your neighbor. Just kinda like we did last year.
You said backyards and things like...
Not something else. We have some nice flowering trees that we planted last year that are down at the park now, which is gonna hopefully help the service stance do, but, uh, to answer your question, I have no problem putting out kinda what we did last year. Put it out by May 1st, not next week.
The no-mow tour.
Absolutely, okay. Thank you Bob.
Thank you.
Brian, what do you got?
Not much, I'm gonna hopefully start my quarterly review assignments next week. We're gonna meet up with John, with the local union, whatever, go over that, right? Like I said, I don't have much from Rob with the Firehouse. We did get new, we spoke about that, bids. Getting my feet wet with that portal thing with the O and R lights. Kinda easier just speaking with the guy, but you gotta go through all that, unfortunately, but...
Just to make sure we get credit, credit. I got, no, I, I, I said that a long time ago, but I understand that.
With that being said, does anyone care where we do the three lights? Or is that just gonna be...
I have one, I have one that I would love to see, the one right in front of Village Hall here on the intersection where everyone seems to crash into one another? Because no one stops going this way or, you know, goes up this way, so maybe we...
We'll do three right there.
That's the only one I...
You wanna ride the whole corner?
I mean...
We're talking about Baker Street.
That's gonna get a whole new arm and everything, that's all.
Right, only for three lights, that'd be, that'd be one that the board can look at. One here, you have to find another one.
There is one on Seavolt Avenue that, that, it's one of those that has the two poles still. And that light has never been quite the same since that, the crash. So that might be, I can...
On Seavolt?
Yeah, it's between 16 and 18 Seavolt.
Well, that was easy.
Yeah, alright. And Baker, okay, cool. I just wanna thank police, the police department, Fire Department, town, village, everybody that came out for the Little League Parade, it was awesome. Great turnout, good showing. Thank you all for being, I saw you beforehand. It was cool, it was awesome. I don't know, and that's all I really have.
Fair enough, I agree with you, that was a great day, it was nice.
It was awesome.
Lance, what do you got?
Alright, well, we met with the Asian American Advisory Committee. And they have three festivals coming up. One is gonna be on the Dragon Boat Festival, June 8th, in the Ghost Park.
Town Hall.
Town Parks, right. We're also working on the Welcome Pack. So there'll be a translator from English to Chinese on, for the town and the village. So you live in the town and you come, become a new resident, or just wanna come through, they'll translate who you should see. So instead of seeing Dean Asmire, in the village, you have Frank Valentino and our board. Same thing with, um, just general information that, we're also working on getting translators. So somebody comes in the city, Christine and Kate or Kathleen, we're gonna call a translator up and translate, they'll be able to translate. That's how we get in the city. It worked very well that way, that way, they'll translate, they'll be sworn in, they'll be translating, and it'd be easier for us to get around.
So we call somebody and wait there, while they decide to show up?
Yes.
They use that with the...
It does, it does work.
Wouldn't it be easier to have that service there or something?
I don't, I don't, I'm trying to...
I don't think they still have that, I mean, we went, we, we went to the voice conference, it really worked. And, um, I mean, they've listed like eight to nine people. Hopefully, one of those eight to nine people.
Hang on, your phone, you can talk to them.
Right now, you have never had this issue across your, you haven't had someone come in where you needed translating to yet.
Yeah.
Okay, so if and when that happens, I think what we kinda talked about at this meeting is, if and when it happens, you're gonna have a list, Mela probably being one of them, to be like, you know what? Again, this is someone that comes in that you can't communicate whatsoever with. You can pick up the phone, put it on speakerphone, hold it, whatever the case may be. You haven't had the circumstance yet, but it kinda came up, in case we do in the future, at least we'll be prepared for it, which, um, that's all. That's all I wanted to add to it, sorry.
No, he's correct, I mean, we'll, we'll let you have another way, even the phone sometimes. If they don't know that, it's easy for you to pick up and go, hold on, boom. And if you don't get, nothing, no problem, they'll come back. But we have the translator to have them come back, and you're able to show them actually the word to come back, so. It'll all be easy, we're not gonna be hard for you, trust me. This Saturday coming up, gonna be planting a tree out in the Etchens Park. Everybody welcome to come out and, um, enjoy that good day. John is gonna plant the tree from my behalf, and we'll all be there. Villas and towns and residents can come by and check us out, and...
What time are you doing that, Lance?
10:00. 10:00, 10 o'clock. You wanna come, Bob? Rain or shine.
Preferably, well, not that we wanna be down there in the rain.
A little bit of shine, a little bit of sunshine at 10:00 in the morning, a little bit on Saturday. And my prostate cancer walk will be going on June 1st, down at the park. Come on down, it's all for your charge. Get the PSA test, within 20 minutes you have your results. And that's all I have now, then, visit my, um, park committee, we'll be chat. Let the flower, with the flower committee, so...
Garden Club?
Garden Club, not the Garden Club, no, too.
I, I, I'm gonna be like, you're no longer the Garden Club, you are now the Flower Club.
No, I ain't gonna say that, because...
Good luck with that, by the way.
I'm not gonna say that.
Please don't mention any more names if you do that, by the way, just...
Speaking of the Garden Club, did you send the notice about the tree planting to the Garden Club members?
No, I didn't.
Let me say this deal, if any of the Garden Club members are on our constant contacts, I mailed it out, I emailed it today at like 4:30 to 236 people. But yes, hopefully they get like a personal invite from us.
Well, and the reason I was asking Christine that, is that because the Garden Club is in a bit of a flux this year, there is no chairman to notify, but Chris, being a member, has the whole mailing list, you know, so she could just email it to everyone.
Alright, I'll, I'll do that tomorrow.
Would you like to call the copy of it?
Sure.
That's all I have right now.
Alright, thank you Lance. Diane?
Just a few things, um, ZBA, nothing going on. They have all handed in their training records, so they're in good shape. There are still vacancies on both the ZBA and the Planning Board for alternate members, so if you know anyone who's interested in learning a little bit more about village government, it's a great place to start. The Historical Society received some information regarding, um, Slate Hill's historic old Baptist, old school Baptist church. They have a lot of different events going on. We did forward, I forwarded it on to Nancy, and also hung one in the vestibule, so. They're, they have a lot going on this summer. And Bob already mentioned the Harding House. Little League opening day was great, every, the fields looked terrific, I think everybody had a great time. And once again, Mother Nature smiled on us and didn't, didn't have any of that rain we've been having all month, so that was great. It may seem a little early to talk about it, but just a quick reminder that this year's yard sale falls on August the 3rd, it's always the first Saturday in August. And it's not too early to reserve spaces at the park. So if anyone is interested in reserving spaces this year, um, the contact person is still Liz Runnels, and her telephone number, 845-386-1022. And I spoke to her right before the meeting to be sure she was ready to receive calls, and she said, "They're already coming in." The only other thing I have is to, I wanted to request if we could possibly have an extremely brief executive session, just a contractual issue that I wanted to mention to the other board members, it would take more than three minutes.
I'm not holding you to that three minutes, but that's fine, we'll do it if you...
Well, because other things could come up, and then, then I don't want to be the one.
Is it alright that we do it at the end?
Sure. And that's all I have.
Thanks Diane. Since everyone mentioned everything, then I was gonna go over, I guess I'll mention what seems to get the most hits on Facebook, the bridge. Let's talk about the bridge. I'm gonna do this, and I'm probably gonna get in trouble for doing it, but unofficially, hopefully, we'll find out a little more later in the week, but unofficially as of right now, Tuesday the 30th is our, is our date. I don't know, for the ribbon cutting ceremony. It's going to be during the day, I know no details other than, um, I happen to have the scissors that are gonna cut the ribbon. I actually just talked to...
Yeah, you gonna take Bridgeman?
No.
He's gonna hold one side. Okay.
Why, you wanna come?
Are they gold?
No.
What is it?
The 30th, next Tuesday.
I want to, want to, yes.
Okay.
Able to? Oh, sure.
If you're not there, if you're there, it's weird. I don't, I don't know, I don't know anything yet, other than the 30th is the date as of right now. When I know more, I will put something out to all of you first, and then I will put it out on Facebook, and we'll put it out on our website. But, uh, the game plan is to do some sort of ribbon cutting ceremony, um, obviously to open it. I saw today, I was just talking to John about this before, and actually Ryan, the engineer, just called me right before we kinda started our meeting. They're working on the railing, I think the, the, what do you call it, um, cement railing, they were working on it today, something about cement got delivered late, so I guess they have it wrapped, but it's not actually poured, so you're gonna see that process happen. The blacktop had to go down first before the railings go up. But, uh, you'll see a lot, lot going on this week, is all I'm gonna say. And as soon as I know something, I will post it online, we'll send it out to constant contact, we'll get you the information. I just wanted to bring up that, that looks like the projection date as of right now, so. Hopefully, uh, by next meeting, we won't even be talking about this construction, or these detour signs, or trucks going down side streets, and hopefully it will be a thing of the past.
Hopefully, we'll get those signs down.
Yes. Lance mentioned the Earth Day Tree, today happens to be Earth Day, so happy Earth Day, everyone. Friday happens to be Arbor Day, so happy Arbor Day, we're gonna do our tree planting right after. Just to update the board and the public, we are doing wildflower seeds for the kids at Otisville Elementary, to include all of the Bosse's kids. We're not gonna leave them out this year, because we got numbers. Hopefully, they will be in tomorrow. They don't have school right now for Passover. We're happy Passover, since that started tonight, day 1, 2. So we will get them, hopefully to them on Wednesday, and hopefully all that will go good. And the only other thing that I believe that I have, three minutes by the way, was Millennium Strategies, we talked about it in the group last time. We're gonna do a kickoff phone call between the village and the town sometime on Wednesday. It's not really gonna be that exciting of a kickoff call, other than we're gonna pay our 1,200 dollars, the town's gonna pay there as part of it, and, uh, we're gonna come up with some stuff for, that we can hopefully be eligible for grants, so. I guess as a homework assignment to the four of you, if you can think of something that you would like to apply for a grant for, um, and were eligible for it, as soon as I get you guys sign-ons to this, um, app, we'll go over it, talk about it, so. Hopefully, we're gonna see some sidewalks, hopefully we're gonna see some downtown revitalization of some sort, that's my goals at least, and maybe hopefully something in the parks, so. Which last but not least, last year we got a grant, um, from Janet Sutherland, um, from Orange County. We are going to reapply for that grant again this year. I believe the town of Mount Hope is also gonna apply for it this year, so, um, talking to Frank and John, we're gonna come up with some stuff. We're not gonna get as much, I wouldn't imagine, as last year, but who knows? If more people go into it, we get less, but let's see how that works, and so. In the process of doing that, hopefully we can finish up our picnic tables under the pavilion and, uh, clean up down there. Alright, that's all I got. Moving right along, audience participation, if anyone from the audience would like to come up, please just come up to the podium and state your name and where you live. Don't all rush up at once.
Mayor Best Rezaba, uh, in town review, just a couple of things on the, on the Coffee Cell and Carter Company and the Lady's Auxiliary. May 5th, we are having a pre-Mother's Day pancake breakfast. $10 per adult, $5 per kids over the age of four, any seniors are also five. And that runs from 7 to noon at the Firehouse. The Lady's Auxiliary is doing a pocketbook bingo, May 18th. Doors open at 2, it's $35 if you register, and that gets you into a special store for an additional pocketbook. Those are, if you don't pay prepay, it's $40 at the door. If you weren't interested, contact me, I can get you the payment, in touch with the payment per, who per is collecting the money. Also, I still have a limited number of calendars left. I'm hoping that once I, once my, for me personally, once I sell these, whether it's this week, next week, if for a matter of due, I am, I am tired of selling them, I've sold over 140. There are still some left, as the people do have them. If you need some, and I don't have any, I can put you in touch with people who have them.
Cool. Thank you, anyone else audience participation?
Sure. So Heidi and I, or me, we were debating which was correct, but I, Heidi and I, the guy from Gates Banners did an awesome job. We checked every banner, 100 banners, they went to print last Monday, so.
Everything spelled good, everything nice, just checking.
It's awesome, I mean, it's awesome what these guys can do. So, I'm anxiously awaiting their arrival, right John?
What is, what is... Yeah, that's what I wanna ask, um, what, I realize the town's helping out on this too, so, are you guys gonna meet sometime before this and come up with a plan? Because the, the goal, I believe, is to have them all up by Memorial Day, correct?
Correct.
That, that's, okay.
That's the goal.
That's the goal.
Of course, if they get delivered the day before Memorial Day, that might not happen. But we have no, I have no control over that.
If we can get the brackets, we can start getting them up, that'd make...
The brackets are in, um, the only thing is, if you put up the brackets ahead of time, and the banners go on sloppy...
You can't change it.
I have a question, do you have the banner that you showed all of us? Could they use that as a...
We don't know if every banner's gonna be...
Exactly.
Exactly.
Well, this, I know the research, I know the research that you did for companies, so, uh, you have my faith that every banner's gonna be exact, especially if they're precisionally made.
But that, that banner's a year old, so, I wouldn't, I mean, I wouldn't do that.
Alright, here's a question for you, would it, does it make any sense to maybe start putting the top bracket on, so that's only half the work to do once you get the banner? Could do that, does that make sense? I mean, I don't, I'm just trying to think, because you don't know how long it's gonna take. When you start getting them through, obviously it's quicker, yeah.
101, yeah, that's what I'll try and...
I know like the, the town guy said, you know, once they're up there with their bucket, it doesn't save them any time to have one bracket open, not the other.
Okay, alright, listen, but...
It's done?
Well, 100...
It's done, it's done. That's already done. Matter of fact, we'll spill over in the Mount Hope a little bit.
That's fine. Sure they won't, Frank, you guys won't care?
They're not, listen. Probably the majority of people who have banners for are probably from Mount Hope, if you think about it. What's your breakdown, do you guys know? What your breakdown is? Like Otisville, Mount Hope, and the other?
That wasn't a question, you know...
Can it be a homework assignment for next time we talk?
For 100 banners, it's got to show everybody's addresses.
Alright, Mary's answer.
Well, the addresses would need to really, because the veterans could have done from...
Yeah.
There are a lot, but the family is in Texas, you know.
Here from all over.
Good answer, alright, thank you. Anyone else audience participation? Okay, thank you. Moving right along here, old business. I'll make a long story short, I had a little issue with, uh, my personal Facebook, which kind of bumped over into a couple other Facebook pages that I run, so. I did not get this renovation listing back up until early last week, so, um, this is probably gonna be one of the longest things on our agenda, but I would like to hold off. I'm gonna let you say one thing in two seconds, I'd like to hold off and move this to the next agenda if we could, line A, but what do you have, Brian? Perfect. So we'll have more for the next meeting, that's fine, okay. So we'll have more for the next meeting, that's fine, okay. Fire Department, Paul Barn, um, bid results. We, um, discussed this a little bit in detail last time, we got, um, one person that bid.
Just reminding that the majority of the discussion was-
I was only talking about what was on the-
I just, I can't, I can't, I stopped you on the front end, not the back end, right?
Got it. Um, we have one person that bid on it, we have an updated, um, bid, and, um, yeah. Was that given out to anyone, all of us?
I did email it to Sam today, but he just came in like this morning, or mid-morning, so I don't know if everyone had a chance to really look at it, but.
If we're going to discuss the update, should that be done in an executive session?
No, I, I don't, I don't think the reference to the, I just wanna make sure there was no reference to that, where, if you just operate the vacuum of where today was going forward, I don't think it needs to be in an executive session. Trying to talk toward it, Diane.
Yeah.
I think, I think the-
If everything from today forward would not be in there, so as long as it doesn't reference why we were in there.
Well, it's an update, and-
Yeah, alright, well, we can go in there, I mean, it's always a safer thing to, to do it in there, we're gonna be in there anyway, so why don't we just piggyback it on that?
Okay.
Alright, and then we can make sure-
So we have a good result from that, and, yes, I, you wanna just discuss what was given to us?
Uh, yes, so we have, we have an updated bid result, that's okay.
Yeah, yeah, you're good, I just wanna update the board on why.
This one, this one includes, the, um, the original one did not include, um-
That's fine, we'll just do it in executive session, alright, and I'll just tell you my thoughts on it, and if you wanna come back out and speak on it, I'd rather just do that, okay?
That's fine, let's, let's hold it till executive session, that's fine. So.
That's okay.
Let's see here, uh, intermunicipal agreement between the village of Otisville and the Town of Mount Hope.
Well, this is a technically, uh, legal in some respects, it's, uh, there's been communication with council from Mount Hope, um, we have a working draft of an, of the IMA, which I, I made privy to at least parts of it, um, anticipate by next meeting having this hammered out and moving forward, so we, we understand in theory how it's gonna work, just wanna make sure both sides are good to go, and, uh, put that in front of everybody, and we'll go from there, so progress on that, for sure.
Okay. I guess I'm gonna bring up two things on this, Christine, Chris, um-
On D, or, we don't, do you, are you on veterans?
Yeah, the veterans, yes.
Okay.
We had someone reach out to us, do you wanna talk about that?
Uh, we had someone reach out the other day, and she wasn't even 100% sure if she wanted to do this, she was trying to gather some ideas, um, for the, uh, Boy Scouts, but, uh, she called and asked if the board would consider letting a Boy Scout troop camp in the Veterans Park overnight.
So as part of some merit badges for Boy Scouts, they have to do sleepovers. I know the town, I think lets the Girl Scouts and maybe the Boy Scouts at one point use the senior center? I think I'm right about that, no?
Oh, senior center, yeah.
Senior center, never, never the park, no.
No, we were turned down for the park.
Okay, any reason why?
No.
Um, so, that was the first part that I wanted to talk about, the second part was, I kind of, what's that? For camping, for, for overnight camping at the park. The second part-
In the village park?
The second part I wanted to talk about was, and I didn't, I just brought this up last meeting, there was nothing in writing, um, but I'd just like to talk about this briefly, so let, let, let's go with what your guys' thoughts are about allowing, um, whether it be Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, um, any group like that, to camp overnight in the park. I'm gonna put this in, I realize our parks are open from, you know, sunrise to sunset, we kinda had this conversation a while back, um, I think if we have a group like, this is my opinion, I think if we have a group of Boy Scouts, um, that wants to do it, as long as they obviously would follow up with an insurance certificate of some sort, in case something happened, they couldn't have a fire there, because you're in a village, which obviously we would have to see.
It's a good segue, it's a good segue to, uh, the next level.
Yes. But I just think that there should be, uh, I know we like to do stuff for nonprofits, and I'm not disagreeing, but as dark as it is down at the park, I think if, if we can come to a, and it doesn't need to be today, but if we can come to a decision to maybe allow that in the future, um, I personally think we should be leaving some parking lot lights on. That being said, there's a cost behind leaving parking lot lights on, and I don't feel that residents would have to absorb the cost of lights, since we already had this conversation about our other park. So I think there should be some sort of cost to the group, but I'm not looking to, obviously, nothing may be above of what we currently charge for rentals down at the park. So I'll open it up to you guys, you tell me what you think, and then let's go on to the next part. Bob, what's your feeling?
I assume that they became big intents, right, is that the, probably? Yeah, I can't even think, it's a good idea, we can make some exceptions, I mean, we're talking Boy Scouts, I know one of the things they teach them, Boy Scouts, is how to make camp fires, I mean, even if we hadn't. My, my feeling is, even if we had to make an exception, 'cause, you know, have a little camp fire or something, I don't see a problem with that.
Okay.
But I'm for it.
Brian, what's your thought?
I think it's, would be cool to allow them to do it, I don't, I mean, obviously they have the, I'm sure they're insured. I'm curious on why someone else was denied, what the story was there, what those things that made-
We can, we can talk to her after the meeting, that's fine, that's fine.
But in my opinion, I think that's a good experience for kids.
I mean, it's good use for the park.
Obviously, with the whole fire thing, that, I don't think we could do that, but, and it's supervised.
For those of you that don't know, Otisville, Mount Hope does no longer has a Boy Scout group or Cub Scout group, um, they all aged out, and they kinda dissolved it. Boy Scouts, uh, was the last, uh, not that long ago, just kind of doesn't exist in Otisville or Mount Hope anymore. But this would be an outside, um, Boy Scout group that wanted to come up here and do this, um, not living here. I don't know if some of the kids live here or not, but, uh, just was just brought up, and this is not in stone, this is someone that called and asked and just brought up.
She didn't even really leave any, she didn't even leave contact information, like it was a very preliminary question.
That's fine, Lance, what do you got?
What kinda general law, like, that's changed, right, 'cause, um, such as building a fire, if they don't build a fire, are they gonna use candle or camp?
Maybe sort of put these in a different order.
Well, that's covered in our, our use of the parks law.
Yeah, they're not using, they're not using the barbecue pits problem, so, yeah, I mean-
Actually, they do want to use the barbecue pits, they do, they wanna use the, the barbecues that are there.
Right.
Rory, what do you have?
I, 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 with all due respect, it just, this wasn't a, a topic of discussion during our meeting, so I'm not fully prepared to answer that, I'm not familiar with the parks.
Yep.
So I was gonna answer differently than I would have, uh, had you not said, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna punt on that for now.
Okay.
But the discussion can, can continue, if you guys are familiar with that.
I don't know if permission was given to, um, the Lions Club at one point, but I know the Lions Club did an Easter egg hunt, I believe, down at the Village Park, you know, they had some event, but they had-
Winter festival or something.
Winter festival, where they had a fire, the fire pit.
Right, that was fire too, that, that was one of the motivations for adopting that law.
Okay.
Let me, let me, you know, if you guys wanna talk about, and I, not that you guys aren't able to apply laws and whatever, but if you wanna talk about it in lay terms, and then I try and apply that to what legal options we have, uh, then you can continue to discuss them, otherwise, let me look at the law, and then I'll present it to you guys, and you go around that, whatever you wanna do.
Okay.
But I'm not prepared to advise on it.
Are you all right with that?
Yeah.
I don't wanna skip you on this, go ahead.
No, I'm pretty sure that we have a stipulation in the law that we can, we can make exceptions to this, but-
Okay, I think that would make sense to have that, 'cause there's always exceptions.
My only reserve, well, two, two reservations really. One is that it's not the group that's operating within the village or town, and, so, obviously, I think they would be asking to waive the fees, but our contract is, now very specifically says, it has to be an organization that is either operating within the town or serving the town, like if they were doing community service or whatever. But the bigger thing that I'm concerned with, and Christine and, and Bob can verify that this is not new with me, I always try to look at what's the worst-case scenario if you set this precedent. So, if we were to say yes, that the Boy Scouts can come camp, because they're a not-for-profit, and this is something that they do, any other not-for-profit that walked through the door and said, "Well, we take our kids camping too," we would have to approve it, and, and that's something that we need to really think about hard.
Yeah, I, just, you go down, you just take out the name, Boy Scouts, and look at the, and go, alright, they're nonprofit, they're this, and what things do they fall under, and know that whatever that, they, whatever the justification for them falling into the exception is gonna be open to anybody that hits those marks that you lay out as.
Right, and if there's a way to protect ourselves, I certainly am not against it. I do think it's gonna be a wonderful thing to see, Boy Scouts in tents down there, but I just, we, I think we need to be very cautious.
I'm not, most of them, I'm, I'm not, I wouldn't be, because they're, like you said, I wouldn't be for waiving the fee, especially for what you said, but for allowing them to go in there, I almost think without a fire to be the safest, that just for, God forbid, something does happen, but also time of year, when are you going in there? Because it does get cold at night sometimes.
Well, we can, we can have exceptions to our blue in the face, but they can't be exceptions outside of things like bodies of, uh, legislatures that have a higher authority than us, that have set down bans themselves, so. I know there are exceptions within that as well, so, again, I'm, I think it's, goes into the next piece also, which, do you want me to just go right now on that, which is then, we do, and Diane, I, I, I'll talk to you about this also when I'm talking with the Boy Scout stuff, but the, um, there is, obviously there's stuff on the books already, and there's the state brand ban, but the issue is enforceability, which, um, the last piece of that, which I talked to you the other day, Mayor, was that I wanna get, um, our code, I'm not the code enforcement officer, so, the, I, I can write the law, I gotta make sure that my colleague believes that's an enforceable thing for him to, to handle in the event that it comes up, so it's, it's, unlike our issue with, uh, necessity for the IMA, there's, there was teeth there, there's no, there's no ability to, to collect the, uh, you know, so like these things, I just gotta make sure he's okay with what we're putting together, and I'll put that in front of you guys. It's gonna require local law, because we'd be changing the code, there's, it needs to be updated regardless, so, um, that being said, I would like to kinda talk with you and, and tie together the park stuff, because if we're gonna adjust the law, we're gonna make sure match up with whatever we're doing over there, so might as well kinda look at it. Yeah, but what's the timeframe on the Boy Scout, I missed that part.
There is none.
No, I don't even know.
We don't know, they just pulled in a request, that's it, they pulled in a choir.
Some of the, the idea of the fire might dictate when that is, 'cause I, I, I'm not in that world, but sort of there's better times than other times to have fires, right, so.
Well, there's no leaves on the ground. Um, okay, um, let's also take this, um, let's take D and move to the next meeting. I'm gonna talk to each one of you about it first, between now and next meeting, the rates. I have nothing set, I just wanted to bring it up, 'cause I think we have potential, um, down at the park. Um, I did learn that the, um, Town of Mount Hope will only rent to Town of Mount Hope residents, which obviously is the village, they do not rent to anyone outside of here. Uh, we have a couple different pricings for the park, and that's kinda what I wanted to discuss. I think the only other thing that I wanted to throw in was an employee discount, if you're an employee here, if John wants to have a birthday party, um, which is not your birthday, if John wants to have a birthday party, and, um, I think, and he wants to have it at the park, I think we should talk about that, and obviously-
Of all people, yeah.
Well, I could, I could, I could have picked Christine, but I would have heard about this. Alright.
Just, just a little bit of background on that, one of the thoughts that went behind allowing rentals outside of Otisville, and we have had it happen at least twice that I'm aware of, where people were from Otisville, planned a family reunion, and wanted to have it in Otisville, and they didn't have anybody who was still living here at the time. So, and that's why we, we did allow that, 'cause I think initially we did not, but.
Listen, I love the idea that people are coming, I wanna advertise it more, and I'm gonna get more people down there.
Otisville's on the map.
Is that what they say in the league?
Is the league road back?
Alright, um, alright, just going through here, quarter of the reviews, Bob, the only reason, you're the only one on this, uh, agenda, and for everyone that wants to know is, um, you weren't here last meeting, so I had to take everyone else off, everyone else knows what they have to do, so that's the only reason that you're on there, especially by yourself, so. Moving on down, uh, wow, we're gonna buzz right through these, Earth Day, um, happy Earth Day, today is Earth Day, the 22nd of April, uh, we will be doing our tree planting, uh, Saturday 10 o'clock. Ventrians, okay, I don't really have anything about this, except for, um, probably if you guys could stick around after this meeting, um, as in Phil, and, um, I wanted to just talk to you about, uh, maybe we could do something for some sort of dedication for it, I don't really have anything planned, it's just something I, we threw on the agenda, but I'd like to do something for it, so, um, if you could stick around a little bit after, it'll be fairly quick in executive session, I promise, if not, if you can't, I'll talk to you both on the phone, fair enough. I'll be here tomorrow and Wednesday, so, alright. We don't have to talk about ribbon cutting the bridge, um, what do we have for motions and resolutions?
Nothing.
Okay, um, okay, let's, let's go here. Approval for the bills, can I get a motion to approve, um, the bills as follows? General, $20,235.47, water, $14,436, fire, $4,768.68, and capital, $93,134.
Just to point out, the capital is for the Little League fence and the truck, so those are things that were already, that you already had the resolution for, yes.
Okay. Thank you, sir, thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, um, closing comments, Diane, we're gonna start on your side.
I just have a question.
Oh, I would've given you a chance.
Diane, do you, um, know how many inmates are at the state prison right now? That's one of the questions they ask for the grant, really.
No, but I can, it's online, I can look it up, and, like, you know, sure.
Uh, how many kids are in school?
We just did it.
Yeah, I'll get two.
Just over 600, I think. Hey, we have the exact number.
Yeah, we have the exact number, 'cause we also have Bosse's kids.
Only the state's all you need to know, right?
That's all you need to say, yeah.
Okay.
Alright, go ahead, Diane, what do you have for closing comments?
Nothing.
Okay. Lance, what do you got?
Nothing, really, what's going on?
Alright.
No.
Alright, Brian, what do you got?
Let's go Rangers, let's go next.
Alright. I, I have one, I have one thing that we didn't, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead. I have one thing that we didn't talk about, we didn't bring up, um, I believe a bunch of text messages went out, I think that was last, uh, Senator Schofus sent, I believe, everyone in the village of Otisville and part of Town of Mount Hope, uh, or part of Mount Hope, a text message about the state prison being on the list to close, um, as far as the state budget goes, uh, there's been a lot of rumors as far as what may follow after that, if it does close, um, I know we've gone this, uh, road before numerous, numerous times, um, clearly not me being here, but, uh, you know, the state prison's either on the list, or off the list, or on the list, or off the list. I don't know if it looks good, I don't know if it looks bad this time around, but, uh, um, we don't officially know the five prisons that they're planning on closing, um, in this budget that they're trying to pass. Uh, the rumor is that Otisville's on there, clearly Senator Schofus sent out a message stating, uh, that he'd like everyone to sign a petition of some sort to keep the prison, um, he wants to make an emergency order to keep the prison open, which I know he did once before in the past, a couple years back. I don't know, I know, I got no update, so, other than, uh, let's hope not, uh, I think it would be devastating uh, in many fashions to our small little village, um, I hope we don't have to have the conversation of the state prison closing, but if we do, and we know more, by all means, if we know, you guys are gonna know, everyone's gonna know. So, that being said, can I get a motion to go into executive session with no decision being made?
No, no intention to return.
Uh, no intention to return, that's fine, okay.
No intentions, obviously, if something comes up, and then what we don't have, yeah.
Got it, thank you. Can I get a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, Rory, should I leave that camera on, or should I turn it off?
The real question is- I think you have to leave it on.
Why are we closing prisons, that's the question. Real question is, why are we closing prisons?
It may come, they should be sitting more down.
Everybody should be thinking about that, why are we-
Yep. Wow, you could really fly. And do it. Kind of stick it.
Wow. Where are you going to go? I've only gone like five or six on the, about one. Let me go. You coming, you coming, Christine?
She's the one to go home.
I don't blame her. I'm gonna be quick.
We're just gonna hunt up another picture someplace.
Have you guys liked that new vehicle?
Nice.
Yeah.
Sorry, guys, that, uh. Both of them have no picture of that, so no. Side-by-side, really nice, and, uh, practice new trucks, real aggressive.
And it's got a, a dump bed on it, you say?
The side-by-side has a dump bed on it, so. I don't know a lot. You can haul a few hundred pounds with it, like, we can use it to put mulch around trees down the park. You know, garbage around or whoever, you know.
John, do you have the license, uh?
Yes, that's, we had, uh, you know, they actually did that the other day when, uh.
It's road, legal.
Yep.
While we were sitting there.
They get charged.
Yeah, they get charged, they charge everything.
So go down Highland Avenue, there's a few poles where the trees are growing out into the poles. Is that something that could be taken?
We can do that when, uh, when we're doing the banner, we can just turn it up as we run.
Yeah, I'll stop and see you about putting up the top one.
Yeah, well, yeah, you just, we just do it all at one time. Probably just as easy. But we just have a layout, it'd be nice if we could do them all at once and just get it done.
Get it done.
So, we'll probably end up doing, I'll talk to the tab, they'll start at one end, we'll start at the other end, you know, and work our way.
Oh, shit, you mean that I gotta figure it out from both ends?
Well, I, I figured it out there from the bo, the dog park, all the way to the bridge, it's forty-one poles.
Just be sure you did this side of the bridge first.
Yeah, yeah, I'll do my, our side of the bridge first.
I'm just gonna put fifty on each side of the bridge and just eat.
Well, we can go up to eleven a little ways, too, you know, it's.
No, no, no.
Whatever poles that we put them on that weren't on the original list, we just gotta take the numbers, and then, it's not a deal, I was trying to go hard. It's not a, it's not a, a big deal.
Yeah, I'm sure they're not gonna say, "Don't put a banner up unless they're a fool."
How many flags do you guys put out?
With all the pens. Used to be, we used to have like thirty-six, but with a banner, I gotta see how they know.
For the parade.
Play with the banners, you know, might do every other, or third pole. Can't, can't, 'cause if you drop them down too far, they gotta be, they have to stay at fourteen feet off the.
Buy all the trophies and.
I can understand if they're like, like the corner down here by Pete, by Nick's there, where it sits there, and we've had trucks hit that, so.
Once they, once they get them up, I can play with them, 'cause the flags only go on the, the poles with the lights.
Yeah.
But we can still do down Highland, down Main Street with the flags, down Path Ventures Park. There's the ones.
There's like new banners. It'd be great, so, like.
We can put a flag.
This year.
Where, what are you talking about?
I'm having.
What room?
You're like taking to Middletown, the back way, just the.
Oh, like, um, sure, you had to ask me. Harpersburg.
Oh, down.
Shoddy Hollow, Larry's leave.
Yeah, Shoddy Hollow, so we got from Shoddy Hollow.
We do flag, yeah. Which, we, we did actually get flags down, but that road, there's our banners are down that road, too. So.
Two eleven, look at him, he's right portion.
We'll get them. Now, the banners are going down by the park. Are they going on the poles, or are they going on the light poles inside the park?
Inside the, for the Kilden Action inside the park.
Okay.
Those are doubles. The seventy-seven going down Highland Avenue, and the remainder go down Shoddy Hollow into, basically Shoddy Hollow and to eleven, a little bit, and then down at the park.
It's amazing.
They do blue, blue and entered, only ones, so you're going on this pole right here.
There are only two mirrors that I know of.
Yeah, yeah, that I.
Oh, it's amazing how crappy the photos, some of the photos were, and how, how, how he does, you know.
He's great.
Well, there's, so many places have these, these programs. They can do almost anything with photos.
Yeah.
You know?
Well, someone did, they had a banner, they had banners, and the poles were so small, you could hardly even think of anything. They all were.
That was our issue when we were looking at places, is we didn't want the ones that we've seen in this place, 'cause you can't read them.
You could read them, and you could even see the picture, but you're trying to shoot up their people, and like, where's the picture?
Two miles an hour, so you can try to.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we walk hills, you can't even read them.
I don't know, why wasn't it walk out of the woods?
Fort Rivers has nice ones, you can see them.
Pine Bush, you can't read it.
Yeah, no.
The worst ones we saw, which actually surprised me, is outside Fort Drum of all places.
Really?
That, that kinda bothered me. Yeah, Watertown, well, Watertown was mixed.
Yeah.
They, they had some really good ones.
Literally, they had two different like companies.
It's all in the same arms.
So, we will be.
Well, I know, I know people are, other people that, they've heard about, they didn't get to do it the first time around, they want it on a second.
Well, they went to.
Well, the people that, yeah, they're just, 'cause, uh, Bob there, Eric Lee, well, he does the ice cream. He did do one, he wants one now, he's for nothing. I think it was, with his surgery, he just had too much.
Yeah, going on.
Going on.
He's surprised us so far. He said, "We'll have."
Hey, go ahead. Him.
Well, I, I know there's people that remember, they just wanna go, same with us, you know, we have, uh, only five members on the block.
All right, well, that's where everybody, it's like the firehouse, you can have thirty guys on the book, but you got eleven guys that show up to the floor. How it is always, anywhere you go. And honestly, though, I don't think the younger people get involved like they should, you know.
Well, I did see that, I was having a conversation actually with my mother, uh, age, really big, like, when we were young. And my grandmother was so alive, family got, she always got to Grandma's house.
Right.
After my grandmother died.
Everybody.
That, you still had those events, but they were like.
Spelling was second rung.
Seven days.
Birthday.
We got together.
I was like, yeah, my grandmother, she always tried to used to do, have at least one family party, every summer, no matter what, everybody showed up. You know, that'll.
Well, it's hard, too, like with our generation, we went where the jobs were.
Yeah.
We're kinda scattered everywhere.
Everybody scattered everywhere, yeah.
Or we joined the military and we ended up staying at our lot's base or whatever, so, it's hard. I mean.
Lots of things around here, the kids don't, young people don't stay around here, 'cause there is no real job, no, no job, job, they keep people here. And then with the, you know, with everything being expensive, my stepson, he just, and his wife, they moved down to South Carolina a year and a half ago, and it's, and it's great, you know, it's all.
We, we were one week away from moving to Nova Scotia, because, because that was where a job was, and then something opened up in Pine Bush.
Yeah.
Otherwise, I would've been in Nova Scotia.
You would've been Canadian.
Whatever, you go where there's, where there's jobs.
I would, I would, I would might be Canadian, the healthcare's better. It's cheaper, too.
All right, one more minute. That's ten minutes we need.
That's why I giggle when Brian's up, we're gonna make it quick. Does he have a band?
Are you hoping for your memorial day ceremony this year, again? On Memorial Day, actually.
That's about a half hour.
Yeah, about a half hour.
Very formal.
Actually, I don't even think it's a half hour. I think we show up at eleven-thirty.
Well, you show up at eleven-thirty, I'm there at ten-thirty.
Oh, well, if that's the case, I don't really have to be there until eleven-forty-five. Can I call it in? Face time, stand there with a phone?
Yeah, we got a new, uh, new person this year in, uh, Kilden Action. Here, Harms, can you say Harms?
Carrom?
Carrom. Civil War.
Mount Hope is hard, it's, uh, two.
Clay.
Yeah.
Well, he's the one that named the poster, damn it, like, like, great, great.
Wait, you see that, that picture? I was like, it's, it's gonna look like an old picture. They cleaned that up really well. I mean, it's a clear picture, you can make it out, but it looks new. They did a good job.
So that looks like when I was younger.
Saturday, at the, uh, Queen Cemetery.
Oh, cool, cleaning up, uh, heads up.
This is, this is the before.
I remember you younger. Well, twenty-five years younger, that's, that's how long ago we were.
It still needs, it still needs work.
I lost my kids, because everybody's kids were little, you know, you're a kid, everybody, you're, kids like, three. Somebody's kids have kids, and I'm like, oh my god, where am I?
I saw, there's something the other day, it made me very old. 'Cause I'm looking down, I'm like, I know it, oh my.
Yep.
That's what does it, kids make you realize how old you are, how much time has passed. It's right on.
Christians.
You let it say teacher, scrub it down.
It was her first year, teacher. Whatever, I read it to her. How's Christian doing?
I have three pictures.
The three boys.
Just to let it activate that. Scrub it, spray it with waters. I've gotten all of your old breasts. Yeah, it's spray waters, scrub it.
I look, William's gonna be fourteen this year, it's like.
It is.
Where to go, it is always, you know? He's already talking about, have you determined license and wanting to work and.
I own her house, and a lot of her stuff. It's like next weekend is my fortieth high school.
Yeah, but I took, she's going to Holly's.
That's her thing, it's, you know, if we go back and celebrate our high school graduation or. Wedding day. But if you think about, you probably the last three years of school is the time you spent with those people.
Yeah.
'Cause everything changes.
Yeah.
I mean, there's some, you know, I went and heard through with, uh. Man's wild, I kept those.
But you go back, I don't think, I've talked to, like, three of the guys I graduated with in the last thirty-six years, you know? I, if I run into him down, was walking, that's about, they'd say hi, it's how you do it.
I'll see old pictures where I'll see good names, and I'm like, very. I love, I swear, I don't know that person.
Well, it, it's funny, it's, uh, well, it did, I found out that a guy I went to high school with is over in, I always mess him up.
Her Elizabeth mother at the end, and the.
Is that where, I think that, there's a hospital over there.
Yeah.
He works over at the hospital over there, and, wow, he, there, I drove by that place, a thousand.
Well, if I would've stayed here, I would've graduated, you know, but I've never, but, but most people you don't talk to, you know?
You know, for, you know, they have burned, they have.
My mother, when she went down to Ocala, one of those. Yeah, really, older.
My parents live in the villages, it's right near Ocala.
They looked at the villages, and it's too close for a mom.
Yeah, it's close.
She went from the Adirondacks, she's not moving to.
It's a lot, it's a lot.
It's like, I worked in New York, most of my adult life, I don't want neighbors. I want the, for, for her, and Ocala's really cute.
Yeah, and we have a lot of friends with them, went to Ocala.
She moves in, a week later, the lady in, across, directly across from her, went to school with my aunt, her sister. So she knew my mother right away. Two doors down was friends of theirs that they used to work with, and then it's like, what?
Another, so, that area, the whole, like, that part of Florida.
Village is insane. I don't think I could've moved there. Another thing that's funny about where she lives in Ocala, she was down there, what, about five years? My fourth grade teacher moved in there. That, that was. So if you wanna know where New York is, remember Marion County.
Yes, all those counties, like, it's either like New York, New Jersey, or like a bunch from Ohio, like, by my mom, like, all her neighbors in New York, New Jersey, or Ohio.
Well, my mom knew the area because when I used to show works, you know, well, we were familiar, in fact, because when Ellenville used to do it, and all that, yeah. Well, then, doesn't Trebault have a farm down there?
Uh, yes.
Doesn't Trebault have a farm down there, too? He, he, uh, has a plane that my mother hates, um, but more so George Strait has property there. Which is why mom moved there, but, we just don't have a lot of that part of it. Actually, where Ocala is, the east side of it, but it's up to breed the macaques, so.
I'm excited about the Buc-E's, it's like we can open there soon. That's my excitement for going to there. I love Buc-E's.
I mean, stop there.
I do, and I know, I mean, it's like on the wall.
It's a big, the biggest gas station you'll ever see, man.
And grocery.
Grocery store, clothing store, like a barbecue place, I mean, everything.
I love Union Seventy-Six.
I get my. I get all my beef jerky from there all the time, like, if somebody looks by, like, stopping to eat me my beef jerky.
Well, it's like all the driving that I used to do, is I would tell people, I said, "If you're ever, ever driving and you wanna shower, stop at one of these truck stops."
Right.
I said, "You, you, well, back then, you leave a two-dollar deposit, towel, you go in, you take a shower, and you get off fresh and up."
Iowa eighty?
You know, and you, you think, and it's, you have to fill up on gas, and it only costs you the two, well, it doesn't even cost you the two bucks, 'cause when you turn the towel back in, you get your two dollars back, but you gotta fill up on gas. It doesn't say you have to get fifty gallons. It says you have to fill up, you got a car, takes ten gallons.
Home's had a hundred pumps.
Yeah, a hundred, yeah. No matter what, you go in there, you spend at least an hour.
The first time I've been there before, I drove, I drove, I know. I only took three minutes.
We just turn this off, or you wanna officially, uh?
No, no, officially closed.
I just, can I get a, uh?
Sorry, we're coming back.
Exit executive session and to, uh?
Maybe motion to exit the session.
Six.
Thank you. All in favor? Can I get a motion to close the meeting? Second, thank, all in favor? Thank you.